Welcome everyone to tonight's work session. First item on tonight's agenda will be a discussion presented by the Ball and Pops.
Well, sort of a discussion. First off, I'm Anne Brooks, the Executive Director of Ball and Pops. I'd like to thank the city for your continued support of the Ball and Pops. And our 4th of July concert, which is a city event, has a special guest. The 151st U.S. Army National Guard Band from Montgomery will be joining us for the festivities. And we have been raffling off a 10 by 10 reserved picnic seating area right in front of the band. So all the people would have to do is come in and right before 7:00 and set up their chairs and not have to be there at 10:00 in the morning like the rest of the crowd gets there. So if anyone would like to do the honors of drawing our raffle winner.
Go ahead, Ma.
You're good?
Go ahead.
All right. We will announce it on Facebook, post it. But it is the Kaufman family. So I will call them and put their name as a reserved seat. Thank you very much for your time.
Kaufmans, okay.
We just wanted to make a public official drawing of our raffle.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. And congratulations to the Kaufman family, front and center without having to get there early.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. Anybody got their cellphone number? Give them a quick call.
I've got some good news.
Okay, discussion on the Assistant Marina Manager position. Mr. Crazes? And Ms. Major.
Before Drew starts giving you all the details, we understand and appreciate the fact that usually this sort of thing goes through the budget. And we are that close to the budget, but we are also at a relatively critical time. I remember when President Burrell asked us if, when we thought we would need another full-time person, and that was when we, the answer was when we were going to be selling fuel. And we're selling fuel. And we're selling it well. It means at this point that Drew's working a seven-day week. And in all honesty, his first year of employment comes up October 7th, at which point in time he gets to take vacation. And we don't have anybody who can take his place. So short of a ball and chain, which I don't think we want to get into, we are here to see if we can't move the possibility of getting an Assistant Marina Manager up before the budget season, when it's considered. And it's all yours, Drew.
What I've given you now is just, since we totaled to date, the first page is basically is the invoice on our first fuel delivery. Second page will be the transactions. The first section, which is called Fairhope Docks Marina, is the credit card processes from the public. The second one is an account of Fly Creek. And it continues on to the next page. And then you have Seaport. You'll see the first, first five transactions. What we had to do is we had a problem with synchronization of the polters of the pump. And basically, we moved it in just into the one line, which was the 440 gallons. That's the date which they have taken. They will be fueling again tomorrow and taking another 400 gallons, so. And then you also have Fairhope Dock boats. That's the marina itself. All those transactions are basically when we were testing the equipment. And then the last one is Fairhope Docks Marina Public, which is in the event that I lose internet, I have a backup system to use a key to be able to still access and pump fuel.
Question for you, Drew. I see some calls of 293 and some 305s. On the Seaport, I see 293, that 440 gallon. And I know we're kind of getting into the weeds here, but why was that not 374?
Seaport, that's diesel.
Okay, why was it not 322?
If you look on product, your product code number three is marine gas. Product four is diesel.
Okay, got you.
And product four is non-taxable. They're tax exempt.
Okay, so you reduced the 322 by that?
Correct. Just took out the sales tax.
How do you do that, you know, on the pump? Do you rebate them? I mean, how?
No, I do it through my software on my laptop.
Okay, so every time they come to get fuel, you have to...
Their key is program. They don't do any of that.
Oh, okay.
And it takes me five minutes to change it.
I got you. Very good. So...
And you're, anything under marina, they're just going to say 305, under the Fairhope docks, under boats.
So between gas and diesel, and you've only been pumping fuel now for what, a couple of weeks?
Since the 16th.
Less than two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
So 3,221 gallons of fuel. That's pretty sporty. Pretty good. I don't know what that compares to at a gas station, but you know, compared to what our tank holds, that's pretty good.
Well, no, I mean, and we're, the word's still getting out there, so.
Right. That quality totals both diesel and gas. Last page that...
Yeah, you have, under here, you have marine gas, which were 58 transactions, and diesel, or seven.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, I see that now.
But I would say probably about 10 of those transactions, at the most, were sampling, processing, trying to get the system back online, programming, where you had to go in and do calculations.
Like Drew, I was up on Lake Gunnersville weekend before last. And there, just to give you a figure, on the lake, the price of marine gas, and it was the valve tech and all, and it was, it was over, well over $4 a gallon. We definitely have a good price on that. So anyway, counsel, what they're here to discuss is an assistant manager. And you know, I don't even try to make an argument that, you know, you need to work seven days a week. I mean, I think that you need some help in running that. I know you have some dock hands, and they may not be the people that you want running the marina. And I mean, it's a title Assistant Marina Manager, I guess. Are there any other positions that could be, you know, considered? I mean, do we, do we have to call it an Assistant Marina Manager? Or, I mean, that's just a name, but...
I mean, it's just a title. I mean, it's all based on what their workload and what they're going to be doing, which is the exact...
But they're going to be working full-time as well.
They'll be working full-time, and in a case of my, they will be trained to do everything that I can do in the event that I want to take day off, vacation, out sick, et cetera.
But they're going to also be there. I mean, they're a full-time employee, so there's going to be a lot of overlap, right?
Correct.
I guess my question is, I start thinking about, you know, the off-season. What do you do with that, with that person? Is there enough to be done for another full-time, you know, management-type employee? And counsel, jump in. I guess this is just my questions.
My same thoughts as well, you know. Is there another way to handle it rather than having to, no doubt, you need help and you need time off, but at the same time, is there enough activity, even in, you know, at peak time, to have, you know, Assistant Manager position?
I would say yes. I mean, there's always something to do. I mean, if you look at the road that everybody wants to take with this marina, and the growth that we've already done so far, I would say, yes, you need another full-time employee. And honestly, I can't be everywhere at one time. I've got several scenarios, I can tell you several of them. But you know, between being on the dock and being in the office, and then running over and doing the fuel dock, and then having something go wrong as far as losing internet, you know, you're trying to think outside the box. What do I need to do? You know? If someone spilled fuel, you know, I am training my two guys, my two part-time guys. Every time we're fueling a boat, they're down there doing it. They're using the pro key, they're punching in the numbers. They're monitoring everything. But you've, you've got to, you're only part-time, and you can only work three or four hours a day, the way I have them set up, to carry me through the weekend. And then still, they still, over, they can still go over the 19 hours, but I try not to allow it. You know, it's all depends on what's going on. I mean, if they're out there helping me maneuver a boat and get it tied up, and they go over their 19 hours, it is what it is. I can't just say, okay, drop what you're doing, you know, and then me get hurt. Something happened to a customer's boat or something.
Even with, when you consider that, okay, so in-season or off-season, we're claiming five days fully operational, but always available at a reservation basis to come in and take a slip and get fueled. I mean, we're advert, every marina does that, you know, on an on-call basis. So you've, you've got, the marina is efficiently operating, essentially operating seven days a week because we're on-call as necessary. Somebody wants to come in, somebody needs fuel, somebody has to be there.
And this way, you could run it as far as, you could run seven days a week, opposed to taking the Monday and Tuesday off. I was going to take off this morning, but they wanted to fuel. I was going to try to take off some time tomorrow, but Seaport wants to fuel. So it's, it's hard, you know?
I certainly, and there's no doubt, you need, you need some time off, probably past due some time off. What about in the off-season? Do you see another, maybe this full-time person, because your days are shorter, you know, there's not as much activity? I know that, and I'm, and I'm kind of talking day-to-day operations, I know that as we're trying to improve the facilities, there's, there's a lot that goes on there, and what you're trying to do with slips and everything that we're trying to do in making improvements to the marina. But do, would you see this person maybe stepping in and, you know, and doing, doing the job of one of our dock hands?
Yes.
Because we may not be that busy, there's going to be times when there's only a handful of boats going in and out in the wintertime.
Whoever, who, when and if whoever gets hired, they're going to be doing the exact same thing I do, which is everything.
Yep.
Cutting the grass, cleaning the beach?
Yeah.
I mean, they do it all.
Weed eating, taking the trash out.
Right.
You'll do exactly what I'm doing.
Okay. Counsel, any comments, questions?
I was just going to say that I feel like, even if we are slightly premature in getting into it for the off-season, I think it's a position that'll grow into, into its need as the marina picks up and continues to get busier, so. And I think clearly, you've got to have some time, some downtime. You can't go seven days a week by yourself.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not sitting here crying wolf or anything like that, but for instance, I had a dentist appointment last Wednesday, I had to cancel it because it was so busy. I just couldn't kick three people out of the office, shut down the fuel dock, and just shut down operation. I just couldn't do it.
Right. What do you see them, I mean, do you see them starting in that mid-range, or?
Yeah, I would say the mid-range, around 17.
Any other comments, counsel? I'll just, I'll, I'll say one more thing, is that I, I don't really know that, I don't really know that we have a way around it. I mean, he's got to have some relief. And they got to be somebody that's qualified to do everything that he's doing. But so unless somebody has a better idea, I don't, I don't know how you, I don't know how you deny it unless you have a better idea.
You know, just sitting here thinking about it, about what to do with somebody that we hired full-time in off-season, it'd be nice to be able to maybe cross-train some of these people so that, you know, while the marina is maybe in off-season on a downtime, if there was someone we were paying full-time that wasn't necessarily needed in that area, if there's another area of the city that kind of picks up at that time, then maybe we could, if they are cross-trained on different things, maybe we could utilize them in different areas.
Maybe they could put tree lights on.
Maybe they could put tree lights on.
It's all under Tom Cool, and his department is always busy.
That comment brought to you by Robert Brown, by the way.
No, Jay's point is valid. This is Parks and Rec, so I'm sure Tom would be able to find use for it elsewhere.
I think I asked Tom once a question of, how many people do you need? And I think he said, I'll take as many as you'll be needing.
He keeps them busy.
Well, I mean, as of right now, it's, you know, cutting the grass once a week. I have Tom, he brings down the mower. And if my guys aren't there, I'll jump out there and I'll just shut the office down and go cut the grass on the beach, you know? If I got a weed eater, I mean, the job's got to be done, so you got to do it.
Y'all may have said this, when did we start selling gas at Fairhope?
16th.
16th?
It has, it has the dates on there.
Yeah, June 16th, yeah.
On the top, on the very, we got the delivery on, on the 24th.
24th of May.
And it took that long to fix the warranty issues and get everything dialed in. The transaction listing, I have it from June 1st, but the actual dates are from the, it's actually the 13th, I'm sorry.
It was actually the 13th.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
It was actually, it was actually the 12th. If you look at Seaport, they were our first guys.
And that, by the way, includes a day that we had, a Saturday, where Fly Creek wanted to be fueling, and we were down because ATT was down.
So 66 is actually the first boat to fuel, which is Seaport, which is 440 gallons.
Do we track the profit at all that we're making on this right now?
I do.
Which is...
That's pretty good.
Yes, it is.
Now, I believe that's real good. I did this right.
I gave you some information in your sheets, the written, what we paid for it and what we're selling it for.
Yeah, thank you.
So you can figure out what the profit is for that one.
That's what I cycled it off of.
Yeah, okay.
Jay, final answer?
Yeah, I mean, I trust Drew. I mean, Drew's the man down there running the show. If he, if he says he needs somebody, I think we take his word for it and give it a shot. And if we determine later on that, you know, maybe we've over, oversupplied, we can always make a change or do something else.
I think now's the time. I mean, right now is the time with peak season. We'll get some good numbers back for July, August summertime to see what our revenues versus expenses are. It'll be on the high side in that time of the year, although, until everybody knows we're selling fuel, that'll continue to ramp up. That might even ramp up even in the fall.
Oh, well, with loopers coming through now that they know we have fuel.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
I truly feel that, you know, with cross-training, which you're going to have no matter what with Tom, the objective is just to make sure nobody's standing around down there doing nothing.
That's right.
And as I said, Tom, Tom can make sure everything, it may be more be a fight between Tom and Drew. I need this guy. I got to have, no, I got to. But I think it'll work out pretty well.
Yes, I think so.
Counsel McConyers?
I'm, I'm, I'm a boy.
I can tell by the look on his face.
I just wanted to see where we're at.
Counsel, I know we just talked about that, but we are unanimous in that. We are in peak season. I mean, I think it may be something you want to consider walking on tonight. I mean, I, I mean, we're, and I don't know even if you can hire someone between now and July the 4th, but like I said, it is, this is the absolute prime season.
I'm not going to rush at it.
Yeah.
We're not jumping at the first one.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I do have more than seven applications than I did when I did it part-time.
Okay, well, then we can wait. And as you say, we have to wait, you know, until the next meeting to approve it, but I think if you have a...
But I mean, I still want to get it out there and get the applications.
I think if you have a straw poll here that's saying yes, you could probably feel confident by putting that out.
Start posting it?
We're posting it.
Okay.
And that way, you, you know, you're not two weeks behind. I don't just want you to fall two weeks behind this time of the year.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. We'll get with Leslie in the morning and...
Okay. We had a, I wouldn't call him a looper, but we had an 18-foot John boat call me up the other day. And it was kind of a funny story. So I said, I said, how big's your boat? He said, 18 feet. I said, okay, how many nights do you need? And he said, oh, just one night. I said, where are you coming from? He goes, I'm up on the Tom Bigby right now. I came from Illinois, going down to Fort Myers. Three guys.
On 18 feet?
Okay.
Okay. Hope they're good friends.
Yeah. That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Wow. You sure he didn't say 80 feet?
All right. Tell us about these permitting. Let me tell you, this was on the agenda, and so I just thought it might just fit well in coming in behind a discussion of marina to just briefly talk about what, what you see as the permitting process and applications.
Yes, sir. And I can even, hopefully enlighten you more. What we're wanting to do is authorization with Agenda Item 14 is to come back to you with a not-to-exceed for specifically the permitting requirements and be able to put together everything to be able to plan for and execute dredging of the slips and the basins at Fairhope Docks. And we recommended, the mayor recommended Eco Solutions. One of the biggest reasons, one, that's one of their primary businesses, but they have been the vendor who's working with the yacht club across the way from us there. And there, he's also managing the channel permit that they're trying to get permitted at this point in time, which I know that Commandor came in and talked to y'all about that. The other thing with your blessings, and this was the mayor's recommendation, and also in asking for them to submit a price, we'd also like for them to offer up a professional service price of what they would do, the marina and channel at the municipal pier as well, so that at least when we come back to you, we have a, we have a known cost to do a permit for Fairhope Docks and a known cost to do a permit in that process for the actual municipal marina. As you know, there's been a lot of discussions about the municipal pier marina, and one of the contractual obligations of the tenant out there is a cost sharing and dredging. And we at least would like to start at least bringing back information for you of if we were going to pursue that, what is the upfront cost? And plus, you know, that would eventually lead to a construction estimate for the actual dredging.
So I'm a little confused, Richard. Are they going to be, are we selecting them to fill out applications? And in doing so, they have to know roughly what the cost is or what the scope of work is for...
What we're asking for is to be, permission to approach Eco Solutions to develop a not-to-exceed price for two different dredging quotes. One, the Fairhope Docks for the slips and the basins, and one for the municipal pier. I don't think we're pursuing anything right away with municipal pier, but while we're having this negotiation, at least to be able to come back and say what would entail the permitting for the municipal pier, because the difference there is there's a channel involved. And that's a, that's an individual permit and a whole other process. And I'm curious to what that cost is. I believe that for Fairhope Docks, we're sub $5,000 for that professional services. It's just not going to be a, a expensive permit to develop.
How involved is that permit? I mean, we don't have expertise in the city to fill out that permit?
Then Nationwide 35, which is a self-certifying, non-reporting permit, is not a difficult permit to do. But the difficult part is, is that we, and Drew has said he could probably help develop it, but we don't have a complete sounding for our basins and our slips. We know what depth we can go to, and that is the permitted, the original permitted depth of the channel, which is mean minus six feet, okay? So we know the depth we can go to, but the problem is, we don't have a sounding of what has filled in there since it was last dredged. So some of that would be a guess, which is always dangerous to do in the sense is that when you're, you know, the permit, the permit application also is the construction plan that you would, you would send out to bid to companies that do dredging.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
And so the problem is, is the permit's easy, but we'd be guessing, maybe educatedly guessing what we're, what the, the volume we're trying to permit. The one that is interesting, at least in this process, that we're going to ask for price for is what's called an Alabama general ten. If we can get a general ten, that allows us to de-water the dredge materials on-site and could deposit on that beach if it's of good enough quality. The Corps is already arguing that they don't think it's going to be good enough quality to do that with, but they've, we've, the yacht club in the past has had success and failures doing that with their marina slip dredging and basin dredging. So that would be at least worthy of us because that eliminates the cost of the haul and disposal. And, and the, the problem with state lands is, is if we haul and dispose it, they're going to come back and want us to pay per cubic yard of what we removed from the system. If you can put it back on the beach after it's been de-watered and it's clean enough to go back on there, you don't pay as much because you've kept the sand in the same system.
Counsel, are you thinking when we do undertake this dredging, that we try to get not, not our slips? I mean, our slips are our slips, but the main channel is used by, I mean, Fly Creek has a lot more boats than we have. Yacht Club has a lot more boats than our marina has. Are we thinking of trying to get them to share in the cost of this main channel and then beyond?
Well, the main channel is being handled through the yacht club.
And they've, kind of hinted they would like the city to participate in their cost.
Not, not, well, and it's, and it's not far-fetched for them to do, to have, to expect that somewhat, but I think all partners should pitch in.
The folks at the other, at the, at the head of the harbors winning like a, you know, they should be participating too because they benefit from that channel dredging.
Absolutely do. Okay.
I remember I said all that, got a little trouble, flashback over it, but I thought it was fair that whoever uses the channel needs to participate in the dredging.
Yes, sir. And, and, you know, and I really thought we'd hear back from our friends at the yacht club because they thought they were pretty much on, close on having the permit. Now, we did get notice that the permit had been applied for, but we haven't seen a successful permitting for that channel work yet. So I don't know what challenges they're running to, and it may just be the general bureaucracy of...
I thought they had it as well.
Well, as far as I know, when, when we last talked with them, they had not been granted the permit yet. We had been put on notice that a permit had been applied for, so. They may have been granted, I don't know that answer, but at least the last time I talked to them, they had not been permitted.
It'd be nice to know how many boats the yacht club has versus how many we have versus how many the Fly Creek Marina has. And that's a simple proration, but somewhere to start, anyway.
Where, where, you know, when we say the Fairhope Docks, is there anywhere specifically we're talking about? The slips?
The boundary that I would say is, if you imagine that there's, there's a channel out there, everything going from the edge of that channel coming into where our slips and the little basins in between the slips are, it would be the permitted area that we're looking for.
Got you.
Yeah. You know, you know, the whole idea is like Drew says, he has to have the ability for boats to come into the, to the basin and make whatever maneuver they need to, to pull into whatever slip they need to go to. And, and there's got to be sufficient depth across the entirety of that for that to work. It would do no good if you, if, if the yacht club's successful of getting the channel dredged and we dredged the basin and the slips and we left a mound of material between the new dredge channel and ours. So it would be from that point heading toward basically our bulkheads.
Okay.
I'm assuming to get the test results, we're going to take samples of the basin and the soil samples of the basin and decide whether, how's that done?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that will be part of the scope of their price is to tell us, you know, if, what's the feasibility and what has to be done to see if that, that is a feasible permitting process. So the only thing we're asking for tonight with Agenda 14 is to come back with you and not to exceed price. And, you know, if it's something owners, at that point in time, we'll go back and Drew and I'll put our head together, and if we think we can do it in-house and accomplish the same, we'll, we'll report back accordingly.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, committee updates. Councilman Robinson?
I do not have any.
Councilman Conyers?
Don't really have any, but I do have some committees that would like to present before the council during a work session in the near future.
Okay.
So I'll be back with y'all on that.
Okay. All right. Councilman Brown?
No updates.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
I have no updates.
Okay. I have something pretty big from the Airport Authority. Agenda Item 11 is asking a city to approve and authorize the city into the grant agreement with the FAA for the Fairhope, Sunny Callahan Airport. That is a grant in the amount of $3.617 million. No funds are necessary from the City of Fairhope.
No funds are necessary from the City of Fairhope, that's a 5% match from the Airport Authority. We do have the funds available. That's a 5% match from the State of Alabama and a 90% match from the FAA. And this would conclude the east side improvements, including about seven inches of asphalt to complete the aprons and taxiways and any approaches to the runway from the east side. It would include the installation of the utilities, the septic system that's been discussed a couple of times, water supply, and would allow us to ultimately open up that east side to rentals, whether that be hangars, teehangers, whatever it is that we want to put over there, you know, all of the foundation work will have been done, and it'll just, and it'll be ready for a build-out. And that's extremely valuable land, being that it has runway access and opens up the authority to a lot of opportunities there and them trying to continue to become independent of the city's funding. So I hope you will support that Agenda Item 11. And that's all I have for committee updates. Department heads, Mr. Johnson, you have anything else to share with the council?
Just kind of a status update, we are punching out the 2015 TAP grant, which was the pedestrian trails there on Veterans, not Veterans 104 and 98. If you hadn't been out to see the pedestrian bridge, it's a good-looking bridge, they should be punching that out, and I know that as soon as we kind of get heads up, we're gonna hopefully invite all y'all to a ribbon cutting and have that one behind us. The other two TAP grants that are in play, of course, we have the Canyote 13 sidewalks that run from Sedgfield down to the Fairhope Soccer Complex there at Manley Road and 13. That is in Aldot's hands for final review, as well as the 2017 TAP grant, which we received, which is for segments of sidewalks on Manley Road and on Twin Beach. They as well are before Aldot for final review, so hopefully we're gonna get authorization in the next few weeks to, that anything we need to change will get changed and get those out for advertisement for bids, and hopefully, maybe sometime in August, y'all will be recognizing those bids and getting those projects underway. So we're excited that we're kind of getting the TAP projects that had kind of piled up on us moving and going forward, so excited about those. And if you hadn't been out to see the pedestrian bridge, it is, it's the best bridge no one's ever seen. Unfortunately, it's kind of hidden in the wood line, but it is, it is really neat, and when it hadn't rained, you can stand and see more fish in that creek than you could ever believe, so we may have to put a sign up, so, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Boatock, do you have anything?
Do you want to sit? Can we sit first, honey?
Absolutely.
We have to talk about one other thing. I need to run something by y'all first. There is a grant opportunity, there's no match for it, but it's, it would go towards this visual preference survey, I don't know if you've heard Wayne and I talk about this. This is for the Grino Road corridor, and it's an exercise that would get citizens weighing in on what they would like to see. You know, we've talked a lot about people saying they don't want it to look like Airport Boulevard, and there's been some talk in front of the Planning Commission about that, but they, nobody's moved forward with what they do want to see, so this is just a good start at that. This grant's for $4,000. I think the visual preference survey would cost probably around 14, maybe, so something like that. I'd like to go ahead, it's due though this week, so I need to go ahead and turn it in, regardless if we go forward or not with the visual preference survey, I mean, we can still decide not to do that, but I still, I need to get, I want to get the proposal turned in.
Who's this grant through?
It's through the Realtors Association, so National Realtors.
It's 100%?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's part of their smart-
The grants-
The grant.
For $2,500, but the cost might be $15,000.
Higher for the actual, which is, oh, hey, Wayne is here too. So it's something that Planning Commission has encouraged us to do, and I think we've talked about it here before too. So it's something needs to be done, and this is money that would go toward it.
And I could just add to what Sherri Lee said, you know, we've heard a lot about Grino Road and the corridor there, and how do we handle that? And we get a lot of feedback from people about, well, we don't want to see, we don't want to see Airport Boulevard, we don't want to see this, we don't want to see that. What the visual preference survey does, it uses a series of photographs, and there's hundreds of photographs, and you start identifying, the public starts identifying what they like, what they don't like. It could be landscaping, it could be streets, it could be mixed-use buildings, how they're located, are they close to the road, far from the road, parking in the rear, on the side, or in the, in the front. And it gets these series of things, benches, streetlights, the whole nine yards, and it allows you to kind of get a good, kind of a pattern book of what people like through these photographs and showing them and demonstrating them visually what they like. And so when we, when that's completed, we'll have some idea about what's acceptable in Grino Boulevard, Grino Road, but also other parts of the city as well. So it's, I've been to this before, it's a, it's a good exercise, and I think, you know, so many times we hear what we don't want to like, but people sometimes can't articulate what they like verbally, but using the photographs, again, they're able to visualize and see that, and then helps us turn that into a new corridor plan or whatever it is, and as we can move forward with a comprehensive plan, it'll plan of that as well. So I think it's a, it's something I think would be very helpful from the planning perspective and also trying to keep Fairhope unique and try to, you know, try to meet the needs that we have on us right now.
Wayne, I agree with you. The, like four or five years ago, when the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the City Council, I was actually on the Planning Commission at the time, when they made a recommendation to the City Council for the selection of the firm, and it was a consortium of a few companies, to update our comprehensive plan, I remember, there were four candidates, and I'm specifically remembering, one of them come in and they had a lot of visuals. And, you know, and I've seen visuals that, you know, sometimes are just cartoonish and maybe not of that professional quality, but that wasn't the case here. It made you, you know, it made you visualize what could be, and in fact, I voted for that team that had those visuals, and they didn't win.
Right.
Someone else was selected, but I remember that, I remember that having an impact on me, just being able to see, you know, you can talk all you want about zoning in a certain area, but you need to show, and I'm guessing that they might even be able to superimpose, you know, this is what this looks like, and with this kind of zoning, it might look like this, and people might go, that's what I'm looking for, or they may say, absolutely not, I didn't realize that would be that.
Right. And I think it happens a lot of times, you know, we're looking at things in writing and visualizing in our minds what that looks like, well, what it really means may be different than what we're visualizing. And I think that that's exactly right. If you can demonstrate through a series of photographs, people can get a much better idea about what they like, what they don't like. And again, we hear a lot about, we don't want to be this, but we need to, we need to find what we want to be. We know we don't want to be Airport Boulevard, and we beat that drum a lot, it's Airport Boulevard, and they're making improvements to it, so I congratulate the City of Mobile, but we need to be able to articulate what we really want. I think, I think this is a good move. You know, we intend to find a firm or person who specializes in this, who's renowned for this, and so that's our goals, and I think it'll be a good product for all of us, and I think it'll be a good exercise for the citizens to go through as well to start looking at these. But also, it'll be great for Grino Road, but also I think it'll have impacts throughout the city as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna say something that I've said for years, is that, you know, I felt like the meeting that we all recall, that, in which the people that worked on the comprehensive plan brought in different concepts, but to me, it was village concept plan one, two, and three, and although they didn't call the fourth, I believe the one that was everybody was in favor of on Grino Road, it was, it was still somewhat of a variation of a village concept. And I thought that we needed to say, okay, a village concept is one, and then things that I don't even know about might be B or C or D, and let's think outside of the box and get away from everything. I thought all of our options were, looked very similar.
Right. Right. Well, Fairhope's always been a very unique place with a very unique development type, and I think to help promote that and further that goal, I think this will help us get in that direction. I mean, to me, it's very exciting, because, you know, I'm a very visual person as well. I like to be able to visualize things, I can read it on paper, but if I can visualize what that means by looking at it, I can then fit that, you know, into my mind, and then you understand what that really means.
Am I correct in stating that you might take a picture, and I'll keep using Grino Road, some, some portion of Grino Road, and then superimpose what might be allowed there under certain zonings, but you also could superimpose, you know, for instance, our landscape ordinance and say that you have to have a landscape buffer here and here, so it really looks like what it would look like under our existing ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Is it not? And, you know, because if you put a building up there and all you see is a concrete building, but you haven't been fair to everyone by saying, well, truly, you're supposed to have a landscape buffer here, or here, or here, and has to be set back this far and off this much to the side.
Right.
Can we do that with it?
Yes, sir, and typically what you do is, first you start off with just some of these broad concepts. You like mixed use, and they'll show you mixed use, and then you start narrowing it down when we start getting to that point, and I think that it's possible to superimpose on some of our intersections, this is what it would look like based on the landscape, because we do have a landscape ordinance that requires the buffer, and I think that is possible to do those superimposing. Now, when you start doing a lot of that across the whole city, that can get very, very costly, but we can, I'm sure we can use a few examples to show that, and I'm sure the consultant we select will have that capability to do that very, very easily. But I think it's very exciting, and to me, it's, it would really help us further that direction. I think it'd be a very worthwhile endeavor, and partnering with the Board of Realtors, I think they understand this, this impacts the Realtors, because we're making a place, you know, more desirable, and that means to them more sales and in a better community, and I think that's why they're really, I think, on board with this as well.
Anybody have any concerns about the actual cost? Do we get a grant and then we, you know, and then we, you know, we have to spend another 20, just to say, you know?
Yeah, I mean, when will the grant taken, I mean, when will the money be ready to go?
I mean, we can schedule-
The budget cycle.
Uh, well, it depends, how fast the budget cycle can be, probably before the budget cycle.
It's a conceptual discussion.
We doubt about February.
I think this is more of-
Yeah, definitely before.
A conceptual discussion, do we want to move forward with this idea? If we want to move forward with it, then Wayne to start doing, you know, again, submitting and start getting more concrete things. You know, I don't think, I can't see us requiring from the city 20,000, that would be quite a bit.
No, I don't think it will be that much.
Probably my only thought is, you know, anytime you have any kind of open-ended price point that, yeah, we're interested, but we don't know how much it costs, and if something was to come back at some astronomical amount of it.
Right. Well, and then we could come back and say, we're not going to take the grant.
Right.
Thank you. I just want permission to apply for it, and if we decide to move forward, we accept it if we get it.
Right, and we bring it to you all and say, we'll need this much to make this happen, and we'd make an educated decision on, is this, is this cost worth the-
We need a formal, yes, we need a reservation to submit the application, right?
Not necessarily. If there's no match.
If there's no match, you can actually just ask them to go ahead and apply.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Usually you're accepting, doing it based on approving that you're going to fund the city's part.
Okay. Well, then, based on that, is everybody in agreement?
And we'll come back once we have more information about the eventual cost, but I think this will be really helpful, it'll be helpful for conversations we have with developers too that reach out to us with, and landowners on the 98 corridor about what kind of things we want developed there. You know, we need to know what everyone wants developed there, so this will be a great tool. But Richard and I also needed to talk about a parade.
Yes, sir, and as you know, on your Agenda Item number 27, you have the MMOR Parade, the Dog Parade. And I will tell you, I'm gonna give you just my background and tell you what we did last year and the unintended consequences of those actions, and we're looking for some guidance from y'all as well. Upon, upon this process last year, Chief Pettis had come forward and had expressed very strongly in writing his concerns about an event that had organically grown into a big event, and I did attend the parade last year, and it is a big event. Folks looked forward to it, downtown streets were full, there was a lot of folks with their dogs, and they had a great time, and the weather was beautiful. But his concern was, is that we had a parade that was going on that allowed for private automobiles to back out of parking spaces and enter into the parade as it was going on. And apparently, the year before, that not happened once, but multiple times, people departing, either shopping or dining and didn't, wasn't aware there's a parade, and they backed right out, and next thing you know, they're driving to the middle of the parade. And trying to address that concern, the solution was that we put up no parking after 12 o'clock PM signs along the route. As you know, the business day for our central business district usually starts about 10 AM, so we pretty much quelled the parking availability for that busy business day in downtown Fairhope. So we're back to the same point. Our business folks were not happy with that decision, and I can't say that I don't blame them. The parade was very successful last year, everybody had a good time, but we're right back to square one. What do we do to try to protect the paradegoers, the parade viewers, and also keep in mind the needs and interest of our business community downtown on a very active day in Fairhope? And, and again, from, Sherri Schwartz with our Police Department kind of recapsulated in an email her concern, she apologized for not being able to be here. I said, I don't mind being at least the bearer of the news. From a public work standpoint, whatever we need to do, we're gonna do it. So whatever the decision is, we're gonna support that decision. That's not an issue, and I'm not advocating for one thing or the other. Again, their, their primary issue is to keep separate pedestrian and vehicle traffic during this event. Again, their option one is to restrict the parking on the parade route and use barricades and city staff to monitor private drives and parking lots, and again, prohibit vehicles as being part of the parade, you know? Their option two, their recommendation is to barricade the entire route and restrict parking and restrict parking and barricade the entire route. Both recommendations from PD get us right back to where we were, meaning that if we're barricading the route, or if we're restricting parking, that parking is not available to our business owners during, from basically noon on. Because here's the problem, as you know, I think the Dog Parade starts at 1 PM officially, and it's probably an hour, hour and a half, and then shortly thereafter, we're getting ready for the following big parade that night, so parking is disrupted. I mean, we could open it back up, but if you open it back up at 2, 2 PM and you start shutting it back down again at 3, you effectively killed the business parking day there. So that's, that is a dilemma. I do not have an easy solution. Sherri Lee and I have spent a year talking about this and still haven't come up with a great solution. The one point that I will make, Public Safety has identified a problem, they want a solution to it. I don't know how many years this parade has gone on, but my position as your Public Works Director is that if it's worked for X number of years so far, you know, let's just have the staff where we need to have the staff, be mindful of that, and can carry on and continue on. But that doesn't resolve or address the concern that our police have identified.
So what was it, what was it shut down last year?
We, the signs that were put out along the route, so all of that parallel and angled parking along that route had signs that said, no parking after 12 o'clock noon, okay? And the parade rolled at 1.
Gotcha. How long did the parade last?
Hour and a half.
Yeah, hour, you know, a little bit, it was, they had a lot of participants last year.
I get feedback from merchants, in fact, Councilman Robinson's wife, I've solicited her feedback, has headed the, working for the Downtown Business Association, and they, she said to me that many people have their biggest day of the entire year that day, so I'm sure that there are some businesses that maybe they don't have their busiest day that year. You bring up a real good point about, you know, do you open it back up and then turn around and close it back down, and there's going to be some cars that come in, but, I mean, I, I'm just speaking for myself, counsel, I don't want to move that day, I think it's a huge day, I think the fact that we have the two parades bring people into town from all over, because they can spend the entire day, and granted, they can't park on those couple of streets for many hours, but I would, I think tonight is just to approve the parade for that day, we can, you know, get into the weeds later. And I kind of throw it back on you and say, you and the police handle it and make it work, I mean, that's, that's your job. And to make it work, well, whatever it takes to be safe.
I gotta ask the obvious question, is that the cars bring the people to do the shopping? That's all the car's gonna do. So if you don't have the car, because 3,500, 4,000 people stay in the middle of the street, I don't really see what the problem is not parking there. You still got the same amount of people, or more people than you ever had in the center of town, going around town watching the parade and hanging around.
Problem is when they try to leave, though.
That was my next question, I know the initial reaction you- That was my next question, I know the initial reaction, you know, closing, no parking. Business, business, but, I mean, looking at their numbers, did the businesses suffer with shutting it down at 12?
I don't know the answer to that question. I hadn't seen any metrics, but I think that most of the business owners that were adversely affected would tell you that it adversely affected them, and I have no reason to doubt their.
This is, this is the feedback I've gotten at the merchants' meetings.
Yeah, and since I know better than to speak for my wife without first asking her, I just texted her to make sure, to see what her official thought was, and I think, you know, they prefer to have it as it always has been, with a sort of a soft close of the street, but if we determine that that's not a feasible, from a safety standpoint, if they have to, I'll make sure I'm saying this right.
Jacob.
Call her up, tell her we've got a microphone.
If the streets have, if the streets have to be closed from 10 o'clock on, I think the merchants' position is they'd rather have the parade on a Sunday. If they lose that down, that central downtown parking from 10 o'clock on, on a Saturday, or 12 o'clock on, on a Saturday.
That was the police, the other recommendation from PD was to have it on Sunday.
What was the date, again?
You have it in front of you for this year?
February 23rd.
February 23rd, yeah.
Saturday, February 23rd.
I think, what, no businesses are open on Sunday. I mean, not very many.
There's some that are open on Sunday, but yeah, it's...
Well, and I just don't think you're going to lose the battle of fighting tradition and history.
I think we'd be foolish to not listen to the Haven is when they want to have it. They make their biggest fundraiser of the year.
Has anybody talked to them about possibly moving the time back?
That's what I was going to say, is just moving it closer.
We broached, we broached that last year.
Have the parade 2:00.
I'm saying a little bit closer to the nighttime.
Yes, if you have, I mean, if you have the parade at 3:00, and you're shutting the streets down from 2:00 on as opposed to noon on, that, I think that might, you're not taking out the lunch hour.
And from the logistical standpoint, to be able to immediately roll from one to the next, prep-wise, makes good logistics sense on a support side.
Could you shut down the streets and forget about that?
The only...
Well, the biggest, the biggest challenge is, is that we shut down the streets for the parade, but just between the start and the finish, meaning that we're not allowing any through traffic into that route, because we have officers and barricades at every intersection that's blocking off the route. The problem, what we did last year is, once you put those no parking after noon, you've emptied out those spots, and even though we took those signs up after the parade, really no one came back, because the opportunity was lost. So if you could push the start of the Dog Parade later, you can, and I don't have any problem with even pressing it up to 30 minutes before start, that that's the time that you got to be out of the parking place. The other thing that I've been thinking about, and I don't know, apparently in Fairhope, when you read a sign that says, "No parking after," people have learned to obey it, because Tony should show up and tow you away. You know, could we try a sign that says, "If you park here on this day, your car must remain immobile between the hours of 1:00 and 2:30"? I don't know.
Don't drive into the middle of the parade if you park here. Stay put.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I think there's a way to do this to kind of satisfy everybody. You know, and pushing it back closer to the KOER Parade, you'd have to figure out, and it's not an exact science, but how long it takes for that MMOR Parade to roll through, and then for everybody to kind of adequately disperse so that you can get ready for the next one following.
You don't have dogs and cats mixing with KOER, and yeah, that was the concern.
Well, if you start at 3:00, it'd be over at worst case 4:30, you've got 2 and 1/2 hours before.
Yeah, right, yeah, man, so I'm just, you know, to not try to push it back too.
Fall downtown with reverse angle parking, nobody'd be able to back into traffic maybe.
You are correct, Councilman Brown.
Thank you.
That experiment is still underway. It's still a little 50-50.
Well, being that that's on the agenda, you know, one thing we could do is we could leave it on the same day, and we could leave the request as is, but then, you know, ask them if they would consider changing the time, moving it back.
That might be the best.
Couple of hours.
I mean, because it's just gotten so big now.
It's a great event.
It is.
I mean, and I think it's special and unique to Fairhope, and I don't really want to mess with that magic, but again, trying to...
I don't believe messing with the time is messing with the event or the day or anything. I mean, they're going to, all they need to know, Davey and the citizens need to know is what time does that thing start, and I'll be there 30 minutes early.
Right.
I just texted, she said they could move it back if they need to.
Okay. That's great. So that might be our solution.
Yeah, we started at 3:00 and are able to shut it down at 2:30. I mean, that would...
And leave it shut down.
Miss the lunch crowd, though, but if you have it spread out during the day, you've got people that stay from lunch till...
Well, and you could put it on there, I mean, I think we could at least discuss, yeah, discuss the possibility.
You still can't eat and be 12 rows, 14 rows back with the people.
Right.
I don't care what time you put it.
But discuss the possibility of putting signs up that say, "If you do, if you are parked here at X time, your car will be blocked in from X to X."
You could alternate the signs, you know, put one, "No parking," and a little ways later. I don't know. I think we can work that out.
But I think, yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're not opposed to moving it back, and we can figure out a way to kind of comply with the safety issues, but also take everybody's opinion into consideration, I think, I think that'd be the best.
Can we put on that, Lisa, can we change that request to say and allow the streets to be closed from TBD?
Yes.
That way, we're not changing it, we're just going to define it later.
And I think this is, I mean, we tried this at Art Walk, too. We closed Fairhop Avenue, we got feedback from the merchants, and, you know, it wasn't all that positive for Fairhop Avenue in particular, and so we didn't close them this last time, and so just testing these things, some people are requesting that we try it, and we do, and if it doesn't work...
I think that, yeah, I'm adamant about keeping it on the same day, though. I think there's a lot of synergy getting those people in town, and that you lose on a Sunday, and I know there's a few merchants open on Sunday, but it's not the same.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you.
All right. Mr. Cool, you still back there? Did he leave?
He left.
Okay. Mr. Cortinez, you have anything, report?
I just want to let everybody know, one of the, part of our inspections when we're looking at buildings is ADA compliance with sidewalks and crosswalks. That's something we look at when a subdivision is final, and that's always a point of contention with builders. So one of the things we decided to do is, we have a consultant that we talk to when we have issues, and we have partnered with him, we are sponsoring an ADA compliance class for tomorrow at the Nick Center, and as, and I opened it up to contractors, to government officials, and as of today, I think I've got 100 that are registered to be there. I've got 60 or 70 folks that are inspectors from Mobile County, Baldwin County, I know Orange Beach, Gulf Shores, Foley, Daphne, all of them are sending folks. Then I've got engineers, architects, and several building contractors. So I'll make you aware, if you don't have anything to do from 1 to 4, you can come listen to ADA regulations, we'll be happy to have you. But hopefully, you know, and one of the things I told the contractors is, we're doing this class so that we can all get on the same page, so next time you have to rip out sidewalks, don't call me if you don't come. So this is their opportunity.
Councilman Brown attended on our behalf, thank you. We'd like a report, full report, sir. Since you're the only one that'd be understanding of that, you and Kevin, either one of y'all. Terry, you or Jeremy, or someone want to give a report?
Um.
Okay.
Jay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, you slip in? Yes, I did. For those who don't know me, I'm Jay Whitney, and I took over for Dan McCroy. Richard Peterson asked me to speak to you guys and just give you a heads up, the camera truck came in that we ordered, delivered last week. We're not going to bring it online just yet, but we're going to propose, I wasn't on the first part of this, the specs and stuff, it only looks at about a 6 to 8 inch pipe, but we can upgrade it for a few thousand dollars, to be looking at storm drains, so they don't have to pay anybody to come and look at storm drains. I didn't have time to get it on this agenda, but he wanted to let you guys know, we'd like to proceed with that. The money is in the budget for that, so...
It's just a different camera on the table.
Just a different tractor.
Yeah.
The camera's the same.
Well, I meant, it's the different mechanism getting it down the pipe.
Right, also, in the future, it'll allow us to upgrade again to get a lateral launcher. So he wanted to give you guys a heads up that you'll see that on the next one. Yeah, it launches up and goes 100 foot up a launcher, up a lateral.
Assuming the lateral doesn't look like that.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so he just wanted me to give you a heads up to see that next time, but the money's there right now in the budget. We're not asking for anything extra. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Who am I missing? Am I missing anybody? Okay, let's jump, let's jump into the agenda real quick. It's pretty long, but not too complicated. Mr. Dias, I guess, you cover 5 and 6, public hearings. That'd be you.
Number 5, 6, Tom.
Oh, Tom will be number 6, then. Okay, who's going, is Mr. Peterson going to be here for these rate discussions?
Yes, he said he does.
He will be back?
He said he will.
I think it's a good idea, personally.
If you see him, Jay, or any of you see him, I sent him an email late, he may have already been in a supervisors' meeting this afternoon, but I was looking for, you know, the information that he gave us last week, and there's just, there's a lot of information, but there wasn't a comparison to what the current rates are, and I was able to calculate some percentages where the numbers were side by side, the proposed versus the existing, but not all of them were presented that way, so I, I've had some people ask me what that is on a percentage basis on it, on some of these increases, and it was a fair question.
I spoke to him right before I came in, and he said that he was getting some provision and so I'm assuming.
That may be what he's doing, then, okay. Okay, all right. Okay, so that, council's items, 7, 8, 9, 7, 8, 9, and 10. So I would encourage you to ask all the questions that you want there. Item 11, Mr. McEnoni, I see you, I discussed it briefly in my report, do you want to speak to item 11 when we get to that tonight? Are you going to be here?
I think we'll have to, we'll have to...
Okay. I think I've covered what the improvements were that would be made, at least to the best of my ability, you might have covered.
We've got the bachelor.
Okay. All right. Item 12, if we have questions on that water distribution system, licensed plumber. Somebody just, you want to give us an update on that, that real quick? Maybe we can save a little time?
Yes.
It's going to take me five minutes to read the resolution.
What we have is a 2-inch water line that runs behind some houses that we can no longer get to. Right now, we have a tip fix, I think that Councilman Brown wants to inform to this. So what we did is, we ran an inch and a half line across some private property, and she has plenty of pressure. The only problem is, is that's just a temporary fix. I have 3-inch pipe welded, I'm going to put it in the ground this week, no matter what we decide, because it needs to be done. Once I put that 3-inch line in the ground, I need a licensed plumber to run their service from the back of their house around to the front of their house. I gave the council three options, and I thought the last option was the best. Do you have that, has anybody seen the three options? Is that news to you? I apologize if it is, I did send it in. Anyway, the three options are basically, and I'll paraphrase, telling them, "Here it is, come to the service," and I really didn't think that would be a good option, because they may never come out there, and we're stuck still servicing that line. The second one is, is we say, "Here's X amount of dollars, hire somebody to do it." Again, I didn't think that that was a great option, because some are going to be more, some are going to be less, some will get their friends to do it, and we might not have a good fix, and then it's on and on and on. The last option I gave us was, we go out and hire a plumber to do it, we do it in a timely manner, you know, and get it done right the first time. And so I think that's the only way to go about it. I didn't even know it was on the agenda, I thought we resolved this at a lower level, and I apologize, I didn't know until the last minute that it was on the agenda, but that's what we're going to do.
There's no issue with going on the, Mr. McDowell, there's no issue with this, going on private property and performing work?
Well, I'm not asking you to go on private property, I'm asking to hire a plumber to go in, I want to make sure that...
Yeah, but we pay for the contract and the work done on private property, does that give us?
Yeah, that issue come up over there on, you know, serving, that's a service.
Yeah, the house, old house, not that Jimmy was there, but you enter into a public-private contract to pay for those services or share all of those services.
But does that, are we going to have any liability in the future? Should something go wrong with that property?
I hope that it'll eliminate a liability.
The increased pressure blowing up of the house.
Because we want the plumber to provide us industry standard warranty with it and everything.
I just, you know, I'm kind of jaded, because when we make improvements, anytime we go in and monkey with something, we take on the liability. Do we need a, any kind of release of liability?
Absolutely. You guys got to make sure that whoever's bidding out, or you get your quote from, has got liability insurance.
Okay, so the liability would be on the licensed plumber?
Yes.
Okay.
And they provide an industry standard, and we want to use PECs and stuff, but I'll get with them on that.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
As long as it's okay with your attorney, I just want to make sure we don't have a liability on us for that.
You've got a contract with them, and we're trying to, we contracted with the private and with the property, no?
No, I, we'll contract with the plumber. The thought process being, there's seven to be done, we'll have all seven of them bid it out, the lowest people price will go to each individual place. I don't want to do it as a group thing, because if I do it as a group thing, I might not get done for a month. I'd like to do it, you know, in a much shorter time frame, every day and back there.
How many houses are we talking about?
Seven.
Seven houses.
Yeah, and I do want the council to know this, because since it's come up, this won't be the last time I'm in front of you asking for this. The sins of our father, we've got about three other areas that are exactly like this, but I don't, this is the worst. I don't want to tack it in, you know, in phases.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jay. Item 13, Lynn, will that be you to discuss that, or Drew? Which one, if we have questions about that? This is what we went over at the last work session. Did we settle on that 10 foot per month for open slips? $10 per foot per month?
Yeah, well, I don't know that you settled on it, that was our recommendation.
Yeah, we're currently at 8.
750 on the commercial.
The reason I'm asking that, and that's, you know, quite a, quite an increase from $8 to...
We didn't get anything back to me as to whether you really wanted to do that.
I think I made a recommendation on the...
The commercial.
Commercial to be, we said 750. Yeah, I think I got the token agreement from the council on that at the work session. So that's the one that needs to be filled in. Is that on the actual resolution of 14?
I don't have any figures on the resolution.
Is that? Okay. Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's on an F. Okay, all right. I noticed on my sheet from last week it was blank. All right, we'll ask you questions if we have that. Okay, number 14 was the item that Mr. Richard Johnson discussed a little while ago, so I skip over that. Number 15, it's pretty self-explanatory, 16. Is, who would, if we had any questions, that'd be you, Richard, right? Do you want to spend a minute or two on that now?
We've had a Dickens of a time getting our CND permit renewed, but we have finally got it worked out with ADM, and the biggest issue is that our permitted area is what is permitted and what is in actuality is different. So they have said they will accept an updated survey that captures all the monitoring wells, the stormwater pond, as well as the actual filled section, and so this $3,600 is the cost to get all of that certified surveying done, so we can complete our permit application. We're fortunately being able to operate under the existing permit, but it technically expired back at the end of September 2017, so we'd like to get this done and move on, so that's what that $3,600 is for. Thank you.
Very good. Item 17, that's self-explanatory, that would be you as well, should we have questions about fireworks, Richard?
Yes, sir.
The fire station, self-explanatory. 19 would be Richard, if you have questions. 20, I'm assuming, is budgeted, they might flip back to see that for sure.
Is that it, Ross?
Yep.
Thank you.
What is that, 20, 21 up, Kevin?
No.
Okay, that's budgeted.
100 budgeted.
Somebody needs to get ahead on that.
I don't know about 11.
22 has to do with that lease of a little parcel of land down at DeMarina. I think I can discuss that if I needed to, or Lynn, if she needs to, or Drew, if he's here. Okay, 23, we'll ask the police about that. 24, 25, stop me if you have any questions about any of this, these are pretty standard. 26, the request from the firefighters to have their wives dinner at the Civic Center. So 27, council, so you know, I put allow, and I left the date the same and said to allow the streets to be closed, TBD. Good enough for that? That way it sets, they can plan, it sets their date, we've, sounds like we let them know, you know, they can get back to us on that, on that time. And then public participation in the executive session could be lengthy, could be an hour, an hour and 20 minutes tonight, just to get you an idea. Y'all have any questions or any comments? Have you got a bargain?
No.
Three hours. Three hours.
Thought of sitting around talking about the law for an extra hour, hour and a half.
And not get paid for it? I'll tell you what, come on.
Really, I'm just excited.
I know. It's gotta hurt you, huh?